First of all, before we get started, I want to talk about Clearview Elementary. Okay, it's a brand-new school. Have you guys drove by 24258 lately and seen a big school going up there? It's a neat school. It's a large school. It's going to hold about 840 students. We're contracted to have it completed by December of 2021. So by the end of this fiscal year, not the school year, but fiscal year. And then we're planning on opening it up in August of 2022. So this whole meeting, this redistricting that we're talking about, is going to be more involved with not this coming year, but the year after. So if your student's in third grade right now, then they'll be going to the fourth grade next year, and then they'll be in fifth grade the year after that. If they're in fourth grade, they're already going to be matriculated into the middle school by the time this happens. So students in grades K through three would be impacted by this redistricting. All right? So as I mentioned before, we're looking at August 2022 for the school year, 2223 school year, that we're looking at the redistricting alignment. And so some of the things that we've done already in this process to get ready for the redistricting is we talked with the board, and we got their guidance back in September of 2019 while we were doing Coastal Elementary School. Okay, so we knew we were going to do Coastal Elementary School down in the Stump Sound Township down by Sneed's Ferry, and we knew we were going to do this one up here. And so we were looking at preparing the redistricting at that point in time. Well, we had some funding problems to get this Clearview Elementary started at the same time as Coastal. So we had postponed Clearview Elementary from starting for another year, but we already had the guidelines for the redistricting. And then once we got the direction from the board, we started researching different options. And before I go any farther, some of the directions that the board gave us, and this is very important to know, is that they want us to look at school capacities, make sure we don't overcrowd schools as much as possible. If we can, when we redistrict, if we can alleviate overcrowding in schools, that's probably one of the primary things we had to look at. The other thing that was very, very important to us was that we didn't want to disrupt neighborhoods. In other words, we didn't want to split up a neighborhood and send one side of the street to one school, one side of the street to the other school, and then different bell times and everything, they don't get to play together, they're just going to different schools, different teams, things like that. We didn't want to do that. We wanted to make sure that the neighborhoods were cohesive. Does that make sense? The other thing we wanted to look at was transportation efficiency. We didn't want to say, well, yeah, we have space over at this school over here, and it's overcrowded clear across the county. We're not going to take students and drive them an hour and a half, two hours on a bus to get to that school. That didn't make sense either. So we wanted to make sure we were as efficient as possible with transportation. And we didn't want to redistrict students that had already been redistricted in the past in the elementary schools. So those are some of the guidelines that we were focused on. And once we did that, what we were looking at is we said, okay, we have to create some options. So that's when we started getting together with transportation, with the staff, and also with NC State. They've got a research department called ORED, Organizational Research Education and Development. And that's what they do. They actually go in and look at district lines and counties and figure out what's the best way to optimize the districts, to reduce transportation times, to make sure the neighborhoods are together. And so we went and looked at that, and they gave us a map. When they gave us a map, that's when we got back together as a group, said, okay, well, does this really make sense? Let's look at each of these roads here. Well, if our bus routes are running this way, and then all of a sudden we've got to have another bus running on that same road the other way, well, that wouldn't make sense. So how do you do some fine tuning to these maps and options? And so we started looking at that, and then we finally came up with a proposed map. Okay, and we presented that proposed map to the Board, Board of Education, last month, well, earlier this month, March 2nd, I believe was the date. And we said, this is a proposed map. It meets the guidelines, criteria that the Board has put together for us. What we'd like to do is reach out to the community now and talk to them and let them know what we're doing as well. And also to get feedback and input from you is to see if there's anything else that we have to look at or we didn't consider, and we need to make adjustments for. Once that's done, once we get this community feedback, we're going to go ahead and bring that information back to the Board, and we're going to review it first, and we'll give the information to the Board as well. And then any additional recommendations, we presented the Board at that point in time. We will ask the Board to consider doing redistricting lines at the April Board Meeting. Now, that's the Board's decision, what they do or not, but at the same time, though, this is something that we wanted to make sure that we provided the community, the parents and the students adequate time going forward, because this is a year and a half out before they look at the redistricting. So if you've got to do additional planning or adjustments, now's a good time to do it. Don't wait till the last three or four months before the next school year starts before we start telling you, well, we're going to move students around. We didn't want to do that. We wanted to give you as much time as possible. And that's one of the reasons why we want to bring it to the Board in April. If you guys have any questions, please let me know, okay? I can talk for a long time, and I just don't want to... All right, this slide right here, I don't know if you can see it or not. Hopefully you can. But this is probably the meat of the whole matter right here. What you see on the left side is a table. What you see on the right side is a map, okay? In that map, you see different, excuse me, you see different colored districts. And also on the left side, you see the table, and what that shows you is there are seven schools that are going to be impacted by the redistricting. And that's Stateside, Carolina Forest, Heritage Elementary where we're at tonight, Richlands Elementary, Metta View Elementary, Blue Creek Elementary, Southwest Elementary, and the new school, which we just named March 2nd as Clearview Elementary. What you're seeing in the next column, which says 2020 students, this is the physical address for all children that live in that district as it is right now. Does that make sense? Now, the numbers may be a little off because we may have somebody that's out of district or somebody wants to come into the district, and so we've got a little bit of fluctuation there, but not too much. This is a pretty good number. This is an accurate number of physical addresses. So for example, when I'm looking at Stateside Elementary, I see I've got 665 students, K-5 students, that live in the Stateside Elementary School District right now. When I look at the physical capacity of the school, I've got 633 student capacity. So I'm over. I'm over capacity right there. When I look down the whole list, when I look at 2020 student numbers versus the capacities, I've got five schools that are over capacity right now. And so we need to address that because, as you know, Richlands area and the whole northwest area of the county is growing rapidly, and we need to address that somehow. So what we're looking at is looking at realigning the maps to make sure we're efficient. We load balance all the schools so every school, to the extent possible, is not over capacity. We do have two outlying school districts that are still going to be out of capacity, and that's going to be the Southwest Elementary School District and the Carolina Forest Elementary School District. I'll go into that a little bit later. But what you'll notice also is that I've got a red number right beside that. We still have mobile classrooms out there to accommodate that. Heritage Elementary, gee, now, how many mobile classrooms do you have right now? 16, okay? The one thing we're trying to do is eliminate the need for all the mobile classrooms that we have right now. We may not ever be able to get rid of them all, but we're going to try to reduce it as much as possible. A good example, some of the reasons why is the schools aren't built to have all these additional students in there. You have a cafeteria. It may house 200 students, but then all of a sudden you've got 800 students in the school. So does that mean you have four cafeteria lunch periods? And all of a sudden, does that mean the kids are going to start eating at 9:30 in the morning or finishing at 2:30 in the afternoon? Do you see what I'm saying? The schools weren't built for that many students. The other thing that I'm always concerned about, when we have a school like this, and this is a great school, we have a school like this, it's built so the classrooms are inside. So for safety purposes, if there's inclement weather coming through, if there's any other safety concerns we may have, an active incident going on over the high school or something like this, then we can actually bunker down in here. So it's safer than having mobile classrooms. We use mobile classrooms because we need to. We always focus on making sure that our capacities are addressed through regular school construction instead of trying to throw mobiles every time. That's a temporary solution. That's a solution that we don't want to have. I will finally get up and walk a little bit, okay? But this is the map that we just talked about over on the right-hand side of that slide. And I've put the same maps over there on the wall so you can see them too. But a couple of things I would like for you to take note of is when we're looking at this, these are color-coded. The blue is the new Clearview Elementary District right now. The red is Heritage Elementary, and I won't go into the others as much because I think you... Does your child go to Heritage right here? Okay, so if you look at it, so what you're going to see is that for the most part for Heritage Elementary, that over by Catherine Lake in the Bannerman Mill Road area, that's an area that's going to be impacted, and it's going to be going down into the new Clearview Elementary School as proposed. What you'll also see, though, if you look carefully, this is a good example right here. The Richland Elementary School, that's in Brown. If I look right here, though, I've got a brown line going all the way through here. So that brown line is the current district as it is today. However, because it's shaded in red, that's the proposed district going forward. And the reason why that's important, if you look at this, this makes this whole district a lot more contiguous. We actually provide transportation in this area. It's actually going to be 10 to 15 minutes quicker than going to Richland's Elementary School all the way over here, where we can go to Heritage Elementary instead. So when you're looking at the maps, please note that if you see a line, a colored line that reflects that color for that school, that's the current district. The hash marks, the hash lines, are the proposed district. Does that make sense? So when I'm looking at the proposed district, what you see is that red dot in the middle, that's the new Clearview Elementary School. Okay, that's going to be pretty much going up Highway 24258. It's going to also include most of Catherine Lake. Remember, we said we want to keep communities together, and that's why we did that. It's going to house about 629 students based on the physical addresses of students right now. Now, that number could be 615, could be 650, could be... But right in that area, 629 when the school opens up, that's what we want to make sure people were aware of. The school houses 840 students. So you're asking, well, what happened to the other 210? Why didn't you fill it all up? We know that with growth in this community, in this area, that there's going to be additional needs in the next four to five years. And we looked at that at all schools up in this area. We said, there's going to be growth. We've got to give them enough room to grow and stuff. And so, for example, I just heard there's a potential of about 750 homes coming up in that new Clearview Elementary School District today. We can accommodate that. So we didn't overfill it, but we also anticipated growth in this process. And so I think you're over on Bannerman Mill Road?
Yeah.
Same place? So what you're seeing is when you go in there, that most of Catherine Lake is going to be in that area. One of the things that was important to note is that area is actually closer to Clearview. And in that process, we wanted to make sure that the neighborhood was together, okay? So if we started splitting up Bannerman Mill Road and Catherine Lake in that area, all of a sudden, we'd have some kids that want to play together, that play together on a daily basis in the neighborhoods. We'd be going to different schools, and we wanted to keep that together and keep the families as a unit. And in that situation right there, where you're talking about too, Heritage Elementary is a great school. I've got grandkids, and I'll say this in front of everybody. I had kids that went to Oslo County Schools, and now I've got grandkids coming up. I would let them go to any school in this county, and I would brag about it because I'd feel that passionately about that. And so both Heritage Elementary is a great school, but the new school, and Lori, Ms. Strope, is a principal at Richland's Elementary School. The reason why I mentioned this, that new school is built the same way, the same model as her school that was built three years ago. And Ms. Strope, do you have any issues with the school? It's a great school. One of the things to let you know about Clearview Elementary too, I'm going off track right now. I apologize, but when we built this, we learned as we go forward building schools. And this new school, Clearview Elementary, it's got a metal roof on it, but not only just doesn't have a metal roof, but it's got a high wind rating on the roof, like a hurricane rating on the roof. So it's handling things, higher wind ratings, the glass, it's high-impact glass. You could take a 2x4 running at about 130 miles per hour, it's not going to break the glass. We've created security vestibles in this new school, and you didn't get those two... You didn't get that, Lori. I see you looking frowning and stuff. We learn as we go forward. Each school is better. But the other side of it that we have is we have a generator, and I call it the BAG, the Big Generator, okay? And but the reason why that's important is because that generator can support the whole school in cases of shutdown. We're actually making that school as a shelter, making it available as a shelter in the future for the county if needed. So this school is new, it's pristine, and it's got some features in it that only one other school has, and that's Coastal Elementary down in Stump Sound. So when you see the district lines, that's what we're looking at right there. Now, we talked to Richland's Elementary School and Heritage Elementary. I'll show you that map with the brown area. That's what we're talking about right there. There's about 120 students there that we'd like to bring in from Richland's Elementary School. That way we can better load balance for future growth for her as well, for Richland's Elementary. And it moves about 120 students there. And then we have Southwest Elementary School and Blue Creek Elementary School. These ones are kind of the outliers as far as where Clearview is, but there's a domino effect where all of a sudden we move students from one school, then we have some capacity we need to, and we've got some other schools out of capacity. So we try to adjust them as much as possible as well. Well, what we're looking at when we're looking at Southwest Elementary School and Blue Creek Elementary School is, Blue Creek is a little under capacity. Southwest is over capacity. So what we're doing right now is looking at changing the lines, getting as close to Southwest Elementary School as we can without letting Blue Creek District take over, and that's about 40 students right there that's going to impact. And that will bring Blue Creek Elementary School closer to capacity and also take some pressure off Southwest Elementary School. It's not going to do it all, but it's best we can do with the lines that we have and the capability we have right there. Then we have Stateside Elementary School and Carolina Forest Elementary School. Well, Stateside Elementary is being impacted by Clearview Elementary. It's over off Northwest Bridge Road and some of the other areas it's taking over. But Roadstown is still going to stay in Stateside. But that being said, there's some capacity there. And so we said, well, what about Carolina Forest? It's over capacity. And this is where I talk about communities again, neighborhoods. If you look at Carolina Forest in the yellow, it's not a big district. It's not a big district at all. It's two basic neighborhoods. It's Carolina Plantation right there, and it's Carolina Forest right there. If we... And they're right next to the school. So how do you take students and split them up in a neighborhood? We didn't want to do that. But we did know that this section right in here, down the road, excuse me, Ramsey Road, we had about 15, 20 kids there that we want... We said, well, we can move them over to the Stateside. It's a newer school, and it's something that would be easy to do, and it would make sense because it's a good transportation route as well. So that's what we were looking at there. So in a nutshell, what we're looking at when we start talking about redistricting by the numbers, okay, we're reducing the need for mobile classrooms at almost all the schools. Two schools, we still have to do it, and those are the outlier schools we just talked about, Southwest Elementary and Carolina Forest. I can't eliminate the need for mobiles there. We've reduced the need for mobiles at the other schools to the point where we'll evaluate it as we go forward. We have to see what the numbers look like, the exact numbers when the school starts back up. But we are reducing the need for mobile classrooms at all these schools. And the capacity for these new schools, the capacity for the schools that we're talking about, with the exception of Southwest Elementary and Carolina Forest, which have to use some mobiles still, is between 75% and 92% capacity. What that means is that there's growth opportunity too without putting kids back into mobile classrooms. So that's what we're looking at right there, the new schools. And the other thing to make sure is all schools will have less students. One of the things on a personal level, like I mentioned, I've got grandkids, and each of these schools are great schools. I can't stress that enough. I mean, I go in and if I go talk to people in the community, or if I talk to people in the state, if I talk to people just socializing, just socializing outside in another county, I will brag about Oslo County Schools. I don't know if you know this or not, but over the last year, it's been a tough year for everybody. But we opened up OVS, Online Virtual School. We have laptops for everybody. We were doing virtual learning when people were saying, well, how do I get a laptop? We were out there teaching it the next day. So Oslo County Schools as a whole tries to be as fair across the board for all schools, and that's what we're looking at here as well, to make sure that there's as much equity as possible for all the students. I'll try this again. So what's the next steps? Okay, I've got a couple other meetings too. You're more than welcome to attend again. But I've got a couple more meetings. We'll have another meeting tomorrow and then on Thursday. And then, once that happens, we'll still collect information, and we'll review the information and make adjustments as necessary, and we'll present it to the Board too. We'll present to the Board all the input that we receive as well, okay? One of the things to know about is we'd like to get your feedback. And we have an email address right there. It's redistrict2022@oslo.k12.nc.us. And you can see also, we have another meeting tomorrow at Stateside Elementary, another one at Metta View Elementary as well. And if you want to look up on Facebook, Twitter, Bryn Anderson has done a great job on our social media and stuff, and so we're trying to provide as much opportunity for input as possible. If you just want to write something down, we've got some forms back there that... Well, I'm sorry, Maureen Jones is back there. Maureen, I didn't catch you earlier, but she works with me, so I'm going to hear about this later on because I didn't introduce her earlier. But Maureen Jones has some forms as well, and she... So if you'd like to fill one out, we'll take that, and we'll make sure that's part of the packet of information that we provide to the Board. That was the presentation. So do you guys have questions?
So you're adding all of these different, like you're putting a bunch of different schools into this one Clearview, which makes perfect sense. You're trying to alleviate the stress on the teachers and the classes and the kids, and I understand all of that. My concern is you're taking all these kids from different cities even and putting them in this one school. So then there comes the problem, what time does school start? Because I'll have a child in Trexler, and then because you said it's two years from now, I will have a fifth grader going to a brand-new school, with brand-new people, brand-new everything, and he's got allergies, he's got a 504, he's got all sorts of stuff that I then have to introduce to a bunch of other people. Obviously, these are the same concerns other people are going to have. I'm not any more special than anybody else. But I know that Metta View starts crazy, crazy early, like far earlier than Heritage. You're moving some kids from that district, and then you're moving some kids from Heritage, and you're moving some kids from all over. So when is this school going to... Like, what time will it start, and will that impact whether or not I can drop my kids off to school, pick my kids up from school? Do I have to depend on the buses? Because there are times I'm going to want to pick up my kids and spend time with them.
Sure.
There are times that their dad picks them up and drops them off every day. I don't. But if I decide to, will I be able to do that? That's a concern because I'm going to have one kid all the way in Jacksonville, and then the other one in the middle of Richlands. Like, that's not close. I know it may seem kind of close in the way you guys are looking at it, but that's not close to me when I live in the middle of all of that. So it's going to be completely out of my way. And I understand you're doing what you have to do, of course. I'm not looking down on that. The school sounds wonderful. I don't have any issues with the school. It's my concern about my kids, and am I going to be able to get them, and am I going to be able to spend that time with them?
Sure. And we're working on that right now. Mike Henderson and his staff is working on bell times and figuring out how we're going to put it out. What we'd like to do is, our goal, and like I said, I don't know what the bell times are right now, but our goal right now is try to keep the bell times as reasonable as possible, and close together as possible. Now, you may have a problem if you've got to drop one child off at one school and go over to another school, and the bell times are the same.
That's a concern because, I mean, right now, like Heritage and Trexler, they're not far. They're both at Richland's.
Right.
I can make it to both of those right now. Granted, my daughter's still here right now, but next year she'll be at Trexler.
And so that's one of the things we'll look... As soon as we have the bell times, we'll let you know, and we can look at other... And there may be other options going forward too, but I need to make sure we get that information for me so when we look at this. And we'll make sure we write down about the bell times and what your concerns are about transporting to and from.
And I know the bus times are going to be longer for my kids as well because we are at the end of Bannerman'sville. We are almost at Fowler Manning. So I know you said it's closer, but that's not closer for my kids. So my kids are going to have to get on the bus earlier, take longer on the bus to get to school, then longer on the bus to get home. They have sports after school and all sorts of things. That's a concern for me because they do Richland's stuff, and this is Jacksonville.
Okay.
That's a concern as well for me.
And if you don't mind me asking, what grade levels are your students at right now?
Currently, fifth and third.
Fifth and third, okay.
So it'll impact my one, but my other one will be at Richland's.
Right, and so one of them will be in fifth grade, and so that's something we'll look at as well. I mean, there's things that we've done in the past that we can look at and options, and we'll get together with the staff and the Board and discuss that as well.
I think it sounds like a wonderful school. I'd be happy to have my kid go there. If they were in, like, first grade, it might be different, but this is, like, the last year in elementary school, so that's a big deal.
I understand. I definitely understand, and we'll definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be insulted.
No, 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 I know that, and I appreciate you being able to bring this information to us so we know how to make this as painless as possible. I know it's going to be... I know, and it's not painless. I know that. I'm not trying to say it that way. But I know it's difficult for students and parents and stuff to switch from one school to the next. Sometimes it's necessary evil, and sometimes we have some flexibility in how we do that. But we need to get the input from the parents before we start looking at any kind of adjustments we have to make. You've heard a lot of things. Do you have any other questions about it?
No, I haven't had any questions. Everything sounds pretty great to me.
One of the things, like I said, we anticipate that the school is contracted to be finished by December of this year. And so at that point in time, next year sometime, I can see us doing some tours, some walk around, so people can actually get a chance to look at the school and stuff too. It's going to be... It's, it's, it's going to be pretty impressive, so. We may even cut the electricity off and turn the BAG up just so you guys can see it work. I'm just kidding. All right, well, listen, guys, I appreciate your time. If you want to look at the charts, or if you have any other questions, or if you want to get with transportation, let us know. We'll, we'll, like, we're here to help, and if you have any questions after the fact, please send us an email, and we'll try to address them. Thank you.